We're good? You guys all good? Call meeting in order, I ask you to join us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight. We have an audience of one and in back of you is one of our team members here at the township. We usually have a bunch of announcements, but other than noting that this is being recorded and live on YouTube and then will be on our website future. Probably don't need to know too much more than that, other than we'll go through self-introductions.
Dave Bruce.
Jeff Rogers.
Mark Rutledge.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Ronald.
And Todd Ziegler there to my left. And Wendy Brown, our recording secretary, is with us via YouTube. And we have excused our solicitor, Tim Bupp, from this meeting. Okay, so with that, if we go to the agenda, the first item is approval of minutes from our February meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February.
Second.
Any discussion? Or call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, the minutes are approved. We will move on to treasures report. Nice that this one, we have taken in more money than we spent, so that's always a good thing to do. Interest was about eighty-three hundred dollars, fines were about eleven hundred. We had kind of a couple of one-time things, cable franchise fees of twelve thousand and recycling grants of about twenty-three thousand. And a big item in the expense side were a couple loads of salt for the roads totaling about sixty-six thousand dollars, or thirty-one percent of the expenses. Questions from anybody, or Todd, anything you want to know?
I have nothing in particular now.
I'll make a motion then to approve the treasures report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the treasures report. Questions before we vote? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, the treasures report is approved. This is the first opportunity for public comment. One person out there, if you want to talk to us.
I think you're here for the sign.
Okay.
Then we shall wait.
We'll get there. All right. Move on from opening comments, so we have ordinance and regulations to look at. And the first one is just continuing from last month where we had the Glen Rock Borough be able to regulate the park. So I think we're ready to vote on that, Todd.
Yeah, that's correct. This is for their park that's actually located in Shrewsbury Township, adjacent to Glen Rock Borough, but they need our authorization for their police to do the enforcement in the township there.
Questions from anybody? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five dash oh one.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, we have approved ordinance twenty-two-five dash oh one. Next item is a, I think this just needs to be a resolution. This is actually just continuing from a prior resolution, but there's been, I think, an amendment, Todd, to, from the county level to the UCC provision for arbitra- I guess it's not arbitration.
Well, it's for anyone that appeals to the UCC, the Uniform Construction Code Board. We're part of the county consortium that, so that there's just one board, each municipality doesn't have any. So, the County Board of Appeals for the Pennsylvania UCC has made some amendments to their regulations. And it has to do with qualifications to serve on that appeals board. So, it's just us ratifying what they have done.
Which we certainly want to do because it allows a quick and inexpensive resolution if there are conflicts or complaints from the UCC inspector, I guess.
Correct.
Any further questions from anybody? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-two-five dash oh six.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, we have approved resolution number twenty-two-five dash oh six. Nothing in subdivision and land development, so that brings us to reports. As always, the managers is first. Todd, anything you want to highlight?
I just want to follow up on the good news that we got another grant. That was given. Identify everyone with texts. We received a grant in the amount of six hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and ten dollars from the multimodal transportation fund through DCED. This funding will go toward curb and sidewalk down in the interchange area of exit four. So it'll catch up, pick up a little piece of Wolf Road that's in the township, then connect there on the west side of exit four and then proceed up along Forest Avenue and then up Mount Erie and then tie in at the top of the hill there with the existing sidewalk.
So we're able to go all the way to the far side of the-
Correct.
-Shrewsbury Commons to pick up the sidewalk that's there.
Yes, see, the total project is estimated, when we applied, for around nine hundred and ninety thousand. So we have the six hundred and sixty thousand in a grant. We already have a hundred thousand dollar grant from the county Marcellus Shale. So that leaves us, you know, shortened grant funding or general fund expenditures of two hundred and thirty thousand. I did reach out to York County Planning Commission, the Transportation Department. I don't know if you remember when we were holding a temporary, while we were waiting to get into the new building, down at Thistle's Church, we had someone come out from Transportation and talk about, you know, the Yampoe York Area Metropolitan and the funding and so forth. And he had mentioned at that time that, you know, with pedestrian and bicycle paths, that they weren't getting a lot of requests for funding. So, they're looking into that to see if they can get us some additional funding for it as well.
That was, I guess, where the name of the head of the department?
Wade Gobrecht.
Yeah, it was Wayne that came up and did that, yeah.
And, as you know, this, I think, was at least our fourth attempt to get funding. This round, they had, according to their announcement, they had eligible requests that totaled four hundred and forty-three million dollars. And they awarded, only had available to award eighty-seven million, so.
Well, that's, that's, that one was a little bit of a surprise.
Yeah, I mean, I was surprised.
We kind of thought we might not be successful. I think part of that might be before we went in with Shrewsbury Borough, which would have extended up into the borough and they had some other things, which made it a much more expensive project, I think. And the borough chose not to go in for another attempt while we said we were going to go move forward. And I think maybe that just lessened them out, that it was easier for them to give.
Yeah, I agree, because I looked at the list, I didn't get a specific number, but out of those, it was two hundred and twenty-four grants that were awarded. Out of those, I believe there, I don't think it was more than twenty of them that exceeded one million dollars. And when we were doing the joint project with Shrewsbury Borough, it was a close to three million dollar project. So I think the fact that it was a lower-cost project-
Yeah, I think that three million was just a-
But I think, I think that may be a benefit to Shrewsbury Borough though as well, the fact that we were funded and we can do it. And if they do it in maybe one or two phases, they can build upon-
On that.
What they've already funded.
And we have the start of it, so. No, I think that's, I think that'll be great for us at all.
Yeah, other than that-
Because I see people walking, you know, you have the white line and about this much macadam, and I see people walking up there more frequently now, so. Go ahead.
The PSAT's annual conference is coming up here in May, so if anyone's interested in attending, let me know and I'll get you registered. And we have now completed, I think everyone received in the mail, your map and directory for the township.
A lot of information on that, I think it was very, very well done. Almost two-year project, but, yeah, everybody has.
Yeah.
The board forced-
They gave you a laminated copy.
Yeah, we did a laminated copy, but you can't mail that very well, so the mailed one is not laminated, but-
Yeah, the crease is in the lamination, it kind of-
Doesn't work.
Yeah.
Well, it's a tremendous amount of information on that. If people want that information, there's a lot there that's valuable.
Talking about the PSAT, I didn't get a renewal card for twenty-five, I don't know if anybody else did.
No, I don't think they got them out yet.
No.
I also note that the, in two groups, the whole maintenance department is going to attend a certified lager training course. I think that's good. And, anybody have any questions for Todd on his report? Okay. Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
Have the code enforcement, sewage enforcement zoning report for February. Are there any questions or anything, Todd, you want to highlight?
I think there was one.
I think as usual, it's pretty up to date and-
Yeah, there's-
Still in the process of transitioning from one enforcement officer to another one, so there are a couple of things hanging out there.
Yeah, these judgments that are being, the writ of executions were issued, those are starting to move forward again. Other than that, the property on Wendy Hill Road, let me think what the last name is here, yeah.
Is that the one right down from?
Humphrey.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the CEA violation.
Right.
His last judgment, he had thirty days to appeal, and that last day would have been on Monday. I haven't heard anything yet, so I'll wait till next week, we will receive notification by then. If we don't have anything, which I doubt that we will, I'll then forward that on to the attorney's office for them to add to the other judgments.
And that's a shame, because he could have saved himself so much money, but-
Yep, so other than that, does anyone have any questions for me?
No questions there. Have the maintenance department report. Todd, if you want to highlight, we got a couple of things there, maybe.
Another, we just finished up Stewartstown speed study, I believe you have a copy of that in your packet. Again, it's kind of very typical of what other speed studies show. Nothing crazier out of this world, you have that occasional car that, you know, is doing seventy, eighty, ninety mile an hour.
Always wondering how they do that.
I don't know. I don't know.
What's the location?
It was up by the park entrance, correct? Is that correct? Wendy Hill. Oh, this is, I'm sorry, Stewartstown Road.
Stewartstown Road is right by Dutton Road.
Dutton.
Yeah, I thought I saw it there, alright.
So that's kind of a straight-
But it is interesting that eighty-eight percent of vehicles going whichever direction or within five miles of the speed limit and the other direction, almost eighty percent. How somebody gets up to eighty, eighty-some mile an hour on some of these roads-
That is a bit of a straight stretch. Not saying it's never been done before.
Yeah.
I can do it with the Camaro.
Yeah, the only other thing is then we're going to do our annual parks inspection on March tenth, if anyone wishes to join us.
And now back, our last page, it says detail for Smith Mill Road, I don't think that's the right road.
What's that? I'm sorry.
The latest page, it did a, it says toward Dutton Road, on that Stewartstown Road. It says detail for Smith Mill Road.
Oh, on the speed study.
Yeah. I'm trying to figure out where that was, because Smith Mill, Smith Mill Road is going out of New Freedom toward Sunset View. Just before you go into-
Oh, okay, you're talking, I see where you're talking about. I missed that, my apologies.
Just a little typo.
He puts us in there, makes sure we read the reports.
That's right. There's little quizzes.
I knew a girl that lived out there.
Imagine that.
Any other questions? Right, land, subdivision land development plan, nothing in red, but I think there's a lot of new- It's almost like he did a whole new report, so.
Yeah, I sent him an email and reminded him anything that's new, if he could highlight that in some form or fashion.
But it's up, but it's up to date, just looking at it, so. Unless there are any questions there? On the Recreation Commission, you've been provided with an agenda from their February meeting and minutes from the prior meeting before that, I think they did not have a meeting in, might have been January.
Well, absolutely, we had a meeting, it was January.
Right, so you have the minutes for that there.
Should have one next Tuesday.
So if you have any questions, you can ask Jeff. Who is our representative there. All right, fire and EMS, do you want to speak to the peer-to-peer study, Todd, or?
Either one of us. If you want to, I'm fine with that.
Go ahead, it was-
Okay, alright.
You kind of give Todd credit, he was kind of the constant coordinator in getting large groups of people together whenever needed to be and communicating back and forth to the person who did the peer-to-peer study, so.
Everyone has a copy of it. Yeah, this was, again, this was funded by Pennsylvania DCED. The grant was ten thousand dollars. And they had a consultant that works for DCED conduct the study. The particular consultant in this case was the retired fire chief from York City, John Sennett. And, you know, basically to sum it up, it's not like there's really any significant recommendations for any changes. He did talk about, you know, continuing work together and so forth. There was a little talk about, you know, maybe initiating some kind of subcommittee and have a representative or two from each municipality and from each fire department just have periodic meetings to keep abreast as to what the fire companies are doing, as well as them learning from us, you know, what we can or can't do financially to assist them. Let's see here. One thing in closing that he had in his closing comments was, he said that this, this area, particularly with the, with the cooperation between the three fire departments and then this area even beyond our region, York County as a whole, that he says we are a model for the state when it comes to recognizing the volunteers and giving them the volunteer credits and so forth. And he said the cooperation is, what he sees here, he doesn't see anywhere else in the Commonwealth.
Yeah, he was very complimentary.
Yeah, and I know he covers all four corners of the state.
Yeah, he was very complimentary to the fire protection companies in the area here.
So some, some of the things that were talked about in here, some of the recommendations, we're going to submit another letter and ask for some continued funding to allow John Sennett to come and meet with the group again several times to kind of help get some of those recommendations going. And more of it has to do with setting up communications and cooperation a little more, that flows a little smoother than what it does now. And not that it's bad right now, but make it even better.
He would be a good facilitator. He did a very good presentation.
Yeah, and indications were from the, his, his boss who was here from the state, she had suggested that, and I talked to her after the meeting, so I think they're open to doing that. So, we will, we'll send a letter to that effect. So, I don't know if anyone had a chance to look through it, if they have any questions. If you did miss the presentation, it is on our YouTube channel. The presentation that he gave has, was recorded and it is uploaded onto our YouTube channel. So, if you have time and you want to hear what he has to say, welcome to listen in on it. Bob, you can come into the conference room and we'll set it up for you.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
On personnel, it talks about, you know, volunteer force. Does that include the fire chiefs too, or are they compensated?
No, they're all volunteer.
Or even the chief?
Yeah, there's nobody paid.
Yeah, the three fire departments that serve us, there's, there's no paid personnel. All strictly volunteer. So when we get into the ambulance and EMS is where you're seeing paid.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions? Good summary, thank you, Todd. I guess that's a good segue into emergency management. Stan, anything you want to offer, you're an important part of that too?
Good evening, yes, thank you. Emergency management does play a part in public safety, and we're happy to do that. This past weekend, Saturday and Monday, there were two sessions of the annual elected officials seminar. We had one council member from New Freedom and one council member from Shrewsbury Borough attend. And so our attendance was, was pretty low. And I was talking to Tammy Ream, the Springfield Township manager, after, after Monday, and she indicated that, that there wasn't any participation from her township board of supervisors either. So, I emailed Bill James, and I know the times are difficult, Saturday morning and a week, a weekday morning, Monday morning, if the County Office of Emergency Management might be willing to come down to the south end of the county to one of our facilities, one of the other, one of, you know, township or borough buildings and deliver that, deliver that class at a time that maybe suited more people. And he said they were willing to do that. So, what I'd like to do is maybe put out somehow through the, through the township and borough managers, you know, maybe from Springfield Township, all of the neighboring townships to Shrewsbury, and just find out, maybe send out a doodle, which is a poll where people pick the days that work for them. And Bill James, I asked him what, what he wanted for critical mass for attendance, he didn't really give me a number. So I think what he said is if we gave him some dates, that he would try to work that in. So, I put to the five of you, if we came up with a date and a time that was suitable to some of the board, would you be willing to, say, attend that meeting here or in Springfield or even at Shrewsbury?
I have been to two of them in the past.
Yes, I understand.
But yeah, I would be. I think it's worthwhile. Anybody else?
Sure, same here.
Okay. Then, then that's what I'll do, and I'll work with the other emergency management coordinators and the managers, secretaries of the municipalities and maybe get Todd to help me make, make those contacts and we'll-
Sure.
Try to put that together. Okay, thank you.
Yep, good. Sounds good.
Any questions for me at all?
Just as always, our thanks for the job you're doing.
Thank you for your support, always.
Another, another volunteer that doesn't get paid for a pretty tough job. You have notes from the planning commissions, I mean, hearing board, short-term rentals, we're getting ready for another meeting, I think it's early April.
April first.
April, April Fool's Day, why did you choose that for any special reason? And super committee has, never really had a need to have a meeting. Todd, I think, is closing in, kind of on chasing down the last of any unused EDUs that might be out there. So, once that's done, we'll be holding a meeting here and then with the boroughs to see where we can go from there. Questions on any of those? You have some information on sewer efforts that Phil Robinson had gone through, I believe rather unsuccessfully too, but if you have questions, either Todd or I could address those. Supervisors comments, just you have my, you have my report. There was no LGAC meeting, too many people at York County were sick and so they canceled the monthly meeting for February. The only one I would note was the library status issue meeting. We've had a couple of meetings, had one with Christian Phillips Hill and her group. And we had one last week, had quite a few people there, it was the boards of both the Mason-Dixon and Shrewsbury Library, the board from York County Library System and the directors of some of the libraries. And then there was a municipal official from myself from here and from Shrewsbury Borough and New Freedom Borough. And most of this, again, if you remember when they were in and talked to us, is a desire for the library system to change the status of York, of, of the Shrewsbury Library and Mason-Dixon from a member to a branch. And if you recall, the biggest thing that happens there is there's no longer a local board, that's dissolved, control is by the York County Library Board. And the branches would have fewer, they would have fewer hours and lower qualifications for their librarians. So there's a lot of, I guess, hostility toward that approach, to put it mildly right now. There are a couple of other meetings that'll be scheduled. The libraries are just asking to municipalities to think hard about increasing donations so that they can show that they will be able to run at a, without a loss if they maintain a member. Whether the library board will even allow that, it's a pretty messy situation right now. I will just keep you advised as we go unless there are questions from somebody. And we also added to here, Bob, why don't I let you speak for this one, because you've taken some action. There is a move afoot, last year it was defeated, it's been revised again, and it is basically to, to have, the state would like to in some cases take over all zoning or at least some of it, rather than leaving that locally to townships and municipalities. I think it's driven by the cities, like Philadelphia would like to push low-cost housing outside the city. But Bob took some initiative and talked to some of our-
Well, I, I saw that proposal and I just don't think it's a good idea for a state to decide how we want to manage our municipality. And I, I think it'd be best left alone to leave the zoning decisions made by the local jurisdictions. And, and I would propose that we would have the township draft a letter and send it to our state representative, state, state senator and tell them we have an opposition to the state preempting local zoning control.
It's a very good point. We have a general plan for how, you know, where we want growth and things of that nature. And if we open that up to the state, the state, the state may want more people coming up from Maryland and, you know, taking some of the farmland or whatever else for more housing development and what have you, so.
It also takes a lot of the work that was done on the comp plan, which we'll get to a little later, and throws it out, because most of that is a ten-year view of the future, where, where we want to go and how we're going to get there. So even, even that, and that's, when we get to that, we'll talk about that a little bit. I mean, that's been a, again, what's, that's more than a year-long effort, right, Todd?
Oh yeah, that's been-
Couple of years.
That's been two-
That's about two years.
And we'll talk, we'll talk about that when we get there, but yeah, I certainly concur. And rather than all of this write individual letters, I think it carries more weight if it comes from the township.
Agreed.
Anybody disagree? Todd, maybe you and I can get together and we'll come up with something, get that out.
I called a couple of the offices and done what I thought about it. I know, I know Kristen and I know Kate, so, and they agree. So I hope, I think they'll be on our side on that.
And PSATS is really against it. And if you got your last issue with a magazine, that's, that's what half of it's about. Who says what goes where? That's what it comes to. And the whole Pennsylvania approach is all governments local because locally you know better what, what suits you in your facility. So if you want a little bit of an education, that's a good article.
That's how I learned about it, by reading that.
It's a good article in the magazine.
I would have never known if I went and read that.
Yeah, I've been following it because it came up last year, but it did not, and PSATS fought it. So I was following it from that.
I'm thankful they're on it.
So, thank you, Bob. Glad that you took the initiative. Go forward and let our, our local or state leaders know how we felt. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, we have no old business. If we move to new business? Todd, I guess you can give us a couple of words on.
Yeah, under the.
We don't have to do anything without it. Oh, yes, we do. Okay.
Yeah, under the state law for small games of chance, of course, you need to be, have a license and so forth through the county treasurer. The Warrior Lacrosse Team is again, this year they did last year and I believe two years prior to that, had requested authorization from the board of supervisors to conduct their small games of chance event at Miller Park. What it, in the past, what it's consisted of is, is raffle ticket sales and a drawing. But under state law, that's small games of chance. But before they can get a license issued to hold it in the park, they need, the treasurer needs a letter from the township stating that they find that acceptable and agree to it. So I just need a, if I could get a motion from, from the board to authorize me to send that letter.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Oh, motion and second to authorize Todd to forward a letter regarding the small games of chance. Questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 My vote's affirmative. We have approved that. Next item will be refuse recycling collection contract is expiring shortly, so we have some options.
Yeah. As you know, the current contract is a three-year contract that expires June 30th of this year. The contract does allow for two individual one-year extensions. We, and again, those extensions have to be agreed upon mutually by the township as well as the waste hauler, who currently is Penn Waste. You'll see there in my memo to the board and, and the letter as well, what they are asking if the board and the township is interested in extending the current contract for two additional years. And they break down what those costs would be. The full toter cost for full service would be for July 1 of '25 through June 30 of '26, would be $409.20. The per bag service would be $299.00 per year. And for year five, that would go from $409.00 up to $430.56. And the per bag would increase to $312.00 per year. I did talk to York County Solid Waste Authority. You know, we're most familiar with Penn Waste and Republic Services.
Yes.
But there are three other trash haulers who have started to penetrate the, the county and have been picking up some other contracts. I believe one's out of Dolphin, one's in Lebanon, one is in Lancaster County. They're telling me, one in particular really wants to try to make their presence known in York County. They're not down this far south yet, so I don't know if they would be interested in bidding. The issue with, with the, the two larger ones between Penn Waste and Republic Services is Republic Services no longer bids contracts that includes, that involves bag pickup. They virtually have gone fully automated. So they don't have two people in a truck and they don't have anyone hanging on the back of a truck. So I guess, you know, some of the options that, you know, we thought about was, you know, we either accept these, these two prices that they offer for the next two years. Just put it out for bid as we've had in the past for, for bag service again. But knowing that we may only get a Penn Waste bid, I, I'm certain, I know we won't get one from Republic. They, they've told us that.
How many customers or households elect the bag service?
The, I believe it was 266 customers or the per bag service, yeah. But there's, we have about 2,600 properties in the township, so.
About 10%.
Yeah.
When, when do we need to have an answer back to them about the renewal?
I mean, we could wait until next month. The, the, the problem is if we want to put out for bid, it might be pushing a little, little tight if we were to get a different hauler. The other thing that, that we talked about in-house here a little bit was if we did away with the per bag service, but offered what we currently have, the full service with the 96-gallon toter, then offered a lesser service, which, which would be weekly, but at a 32-gallon toter. Much smaller toter, but it would be something they could put out every week.
What's the cost comparable to the current bag service at that?
I, I have no idea. Yeah, I have no idea.
What, I think whenever we would change, that opens a whole new can of worms and complaints and.
It does.
I think some people have, you know, at least they understand, I think, or hope they understand that the contract is already competitive. So I'd like to make a motion that the township, Shrewsbury Township, meet with, with Penn Waste and opt for the two-year renewal contract extension.
The only concern I would have is that we're, it's getting pretty expensive to collect trash.
It is. And I, I'm a firm believer in the free market. And, and if, if we are able to, to get a competition back and forth, it's going to allow us to secure the best price for the customers.
I mean, I appreciate what Jeff has said because in Todd, it's really on the end of it. There are always issues.
Yeah, switching over, I mean, even this last winter, I think we had a, a few streets that were missed here and there, what have you. And they've been in how many years now? So.
Three.
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 I, I know when we first switched from Republic back to, to Penn, there were all sorts of problems, which I think is kind of where Jeff was going with wanting to maintain the status quo, so to speak. But I don't know, like, I'm, I'm interested in potentially waiting and, and seeing if we do have another available.
One question I should have asked is what is the percentage increase that 409.20 represents?
I knew you were going to ask me that question. I don't know what the current rate is. Is that increased because of the tipping fees? And I don't know what the current.
The current rate, it says here is full service is $390.36.
Is it in there? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, you're right.
But some of that's tipping fee increase.
Now, now for comparison, I don't know if this helps you or not. Shrewsbury Borough went out for bid last year and their contract runs, starts February 1st. So they started a new contract last year of '24, so about a year ago. They had Penn Waste and they went to the carts. Now they offer 96-gallon, 64-gallon and 35-gallon carts. However, theirs is set up that basically they're bidding for everyone to have a 96-gallon cart, but everyone pays the same regardless of the size of your cart. But with that said, keep in mind for full service, a year ago, Shrewsbury Borough's bid came in at, if I rounded up, $390.
It's very about the same.
Now, one big difference is they do the billing, where for us, the trash company does the billing.
Correct.
So, so that's a big, that's a big item. The borough does the billing and collecting the money. We don't, we don't get involved in any of that here.
No.
So we're asking the trash company to do more, which I think we want to continue to do.
Yeah. I just.
We could.
If, if we don't, if we continue with bag service, I don't know that we'll really realize much of a, of a change or any.
We could ask for quotes both ways, right?
True.
We, the, we could, we could get a bid from Republic if we were to eliminate it.
I mean, if we gave, that is like an option, however we would work that. Because I guess the feeling Todd and I thought is that if, if Penn Waste knew you were going out and bidding it, I don't think they're going to come in with higher numbers.
They shouldn't.
They offered here for two years already, but.
They shouldn't, but they're, they're also the ones that wanted to rebid after they knew what Republic was bidding.
Well, that was three years ago.
Half a million years ago.
Totally different management in there, if that means anything, but.
But I was like, I don't, I don't think it works that way.
I remember that. I don't know, what, what's.
I guess I just had one concern about maybe people have problems running the cart down there. Probably they want the bags are smaller. But like Todd said, if you have a smaller cart, maybe they could handle that.
True. And I'm also curious to see how much a smaller cart costs. Because we're not, you know, like the borough, we charge the same price.
Smaller cart, it's the same cost.
Exactly. But, but if, if you're getting a smaller can, they're picking up less bags.
Yeah, I think.
Cost should be less.
We were.
Yeah, we'd have to specify that in the bids that we, we want.
Right.
That we're in, that we expect a, a lower price.
Yeah. And, and what, what's the size of our current carts?
96-gallon.
Exactly. So if, if they're coming in with, you said 32? That's a third. I, I feel like it should be right around that 300, if not even cheaper, to go to the 32 cart. If, if, if we're, you know, stuck, stuck at the 400 level.
Still the same amount of labor for them.
Well, if they go, if it's full automated, they don't have to have a loader on the back.
Right.
True. I, but I'm of the opinion, I know we have a motion, currently no second, but I'm, I'm of the.
That's why I was letting us talk, because we didn't have a second.
I'm of the opinion that we wait and we, we get some structured bids in there to see if we can in, impact in a positive way the cost for the township president.
That doesn't mean that we wouldn't wind up going with.
Exactly. I mean, this is still on the table. That's why I was wondering, you know, do we have a deadline that, that we, you know, can accept this by, what have you, but.
Well, we, we're going to have to either decide that we accept this or that we're going out for bid.
Yeah.
Right.
Because once we go out for bid, this is null and void.
This is void.
I like bidding.
I do too.
That's, that's two. We just need one more.
I'm fine with the bid.
We've got three. I make the motion that we put it out for bid with the structured layers like Todd was saying.
With the other three.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I'm not asking Penn Waste to come back by themselves. We'll be paying $600. Good Lord.
Percentage wise, for year four, it's, it's a 4.83% increase. For the full service and the bag is 4.56. And then in year five, it'd be 5.22 for the full service and 4.35 per bag. So do we think that someone's going to underbid the current rate that we have right now?
I don't know. I, I just don't know.
People tend to sharpen the pencil when they know there's competition.
Well, i- if, if what they've told me is accurate, it, it should be less because Penn Waste, even though they have the carts and they're, I call them semi-automated. Because they still have a guy on the back that has to bring the cart over and hook.
Yeah.
I don't know about the other three companies, but I know Republic Services.
But they have one, some of them.
Yeah. Republic Services, I know they have one, one driver and they have the, the arms that come out and pick it up and dump it and away they go. So they don't have, they don't have a second person on the truck that they're paying.
So theoretically, it's costing them less.
Yeah, yeah.
And no bag service.
Well, and that, that's a question I heard, that was a question I was going to ask, is if we put this out for bid, do you want to bid with, with the option of the 96-gallon cart and the bag service? And then the second option, 96-gallon cart and 32-gallon cart and no bags?
Yes.
That's the way I'd go.
Yes.
I'd do without the bag, go with a smaller cart at a reduced price.
Correct, yeah. Because if we can get the, the costs for the, for the smaller can comparable to the bag service, I don't think those 200-plus residents are going to be as upset because it's going to be the same or, or less than what they were.
Because they got to buy so many bags, whether they use them or not, right?
Correct, yeah. It's, it's 300 for the year, which breaks out to roughly the 1150 per bag. But yeah.
It doesn't hurt to ask them to do a bag option because it wouldn't, wouldn't rule out Republic.
Yep.
I mean, Penn Waste. That's what we have, right? I get it. We've got Penn Waste now. It wouldn't rule them out. They could still quote where if we say no bags at all, they can't, they won't even quote.
Yeah. Either them or Republic. I don't remember which one we said. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Did you like my motion?
Yeah. You made one.
Somebody want to second it?
Second.
Do I make Wendy back it up to figure out what the motion actually was? Oh, we did, that's true. Well, oh, actually, if there's no second, I think the motion dies.
Mine died. I'm open-minded.
No, I think you make, no, you do make a good point because we thought a lot about that. I mean, that, that's, that, there's no question, there will be problems along the way.
Oh, it's going to be a problem if we switch.
But the reason.
There's some roads that we have that just hide from them.
The reason to get that bid out now is so then if we do go elsewhere, they have time to get their ducks in a row.
Familiarize themselves with the area.
So we have a motion and a second that would say we're going to go out to bid hopefully up to five companies. And we will do it with the small toter and the bag as, as options and all the other wording that needs to go in there.
And what I'll do is I will draft the bid specs and I'll email them and mail them to everybody just to look over before I advertise it next week. Just make sure, got it covered.
Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Why not? Aye.
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 I think that's five votes to the affirmative.
Yeah, it's at least four and a half if we can round up.
Thank you all. I, I think it's a.
And if we change and there are problems, Wendy's the one that takes the brunt of it.
Because she's answering the phone.
So she gets the credit for taking the brunt of it. Yeah, she answers the phone first.
We love you, Wendy.
Todd, do you, um, do you anticipate we'll have a long discussion at all on the comp plan or?
I, I don't think so.
If you thought so, I was going to suggest we might want to change the order here, but if that's going to be.
I, I really wasn't going to get into it too much.
I don't think we should.
And the reason.
I don't think it's necessary to get into.
Yeah, and the reason being is there's the Southern York County Regional Planning Commission, of which we're a part of. It's five municipalities updated the comp plan.
I was going to read every word of it though.
Well, you have time. The, the elected officials meeting with the regional rec isn't until April 24th, so you have about six, seven weeks to read. So I, I did provide you with a tentative schedule for us to get to a point of adoption. So the end of March, the regional rec commission is looking to meet jointly with each municipalities, planning commission members, go over, give them an overview of it. Then the end of April, the 24th, would be a regional meeting with just the elected officials of the boroughs and the township. And then May 1st would be a public meeting to go over it. And our consultant, Jessica from CS Davidson, she's the one that would do the presentation and do the overview and everything at each of those. And then just for your information, we put together a schedule for the five municipalities, you know, what meeting date, their respective meeting dates. They would authorize it to be sent to York County Planning Commission for review and comment and then for advertisement for adoption in August. But if you look at it, you have any questions, you can ask me now or catch up with me later.
It's not at all boring reading. There's a lot of good statistical information that was done as a start. It's actually really interesting to, to go through. If you have a little bit of time to go through it. Say it represents about two years of work from people from five different municipalities, so. So, a lot went into it, and again, most of this, you'd almost have to throw away if the, if the zoning were changed. To be state level, so, one of many reasons why we don't want that to happen. Any questions or comments?
It's interesting in there, years back, the county ag agent came to the township and he said, if you wanna take care of your farms, you gotta take care of the farmer. That's in this report.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, not from him, but it's in this report.
Yeah.
Anything else on that? Well, we made you wait till very last, so we needed to have somebody here.
Best for last, what do you think of that?
So, we have a, uh, sign modification request, I don't know if you wanna introduce it, or?
Yeah, if you want, uh, you're welcome to come up here to the podium, introduce yourself.
Jeff, you just give us your name and address, so we have that for the record.
I'm Jerry Sterling with Pasadena Sign Company, and, um, we're here for a sign modification for the Lube Center.
The, uh, I did put on the, the wall there, the projector.
Oh, okay, great.
So that they have, and they've all had this in advance, they can see it as well.
Okay, okay, so, um, if you want me to give a little, the background while we're asking for this, and you might already understand it, but, uh. You know, the, the positioning of the Lube Center, they're, they're pretty far up the hill, and for years, they've had a sign. That was downward to True Values, uh, hardware was. Don't know, that was before my time getting involved with the Lube Center, we were not, we were not the original people that construct that sign. So, um, when the property was sold, the, from I understand, the new landlord. Asked him to remove the sign, they couldn't come to terms to rent the property and keep the sign. So, we came out and removed the signage as requested, and then when the farm store was being built. Um, they were reaching out to see if they would have any interest letting them use the property if the township would be okay with it. Um, so they kinda went through that channel first to find out, and they said, yeah, they would, you know, as long as they could do their signage on the farm store. That they would, they would be okay with, you know, the, the owner of the property letting them put a sign there if long as the township was okay, so. They, they have noticed a little bit of change in their business when they first took the sign down. Um, some people were a little concerned that they were actually closing up. Um, they do have a clientele that's, a regular clientele that does come in there, but, um. They were just hoping to really put the sign back down at the entrance as a guide, so people could actually see. They are back there and help their business.
Todd, how many other businesses are up that road?
Uh, there's, there's three other, two other businesses and then there's two vacant lots. Um, I can show you here.
Towing and fireworks.
Yeah, now, the, um.
You have a car right there.
The Lube, the Lube Center's right here, of course, down here, you can see where all this is. Sky King Fireworks, and then this is Gordon's Body Shop, and there is an approved plan for a hotel up here. I don't know if that'll ever come to be, uh, but it's been on the books for quite a few years.
Quite a few.
Yeah, um.
It's also a car rental company, right?
Correct, that, that's Gordon's Body Shop.
Is that all together as one now?
Yeah, yep.
But I'm asking that because.
Sure.
There are four or five other people, and if they, they all were to ask for a sign, we got four or five signs out there, not against the sign at all.
No, I understand.
Yeah, it's just how do we?
Yeah, I mean.
How do we, um, and a lot of places, it's like a placard type sign that, that several businesses could be on, or. I don't know, Todd, if something like that was.
Yeah, um, Keith and I, Keith's the zoning officer, I don't know if you talked to him or not, um, let me share the screen here. You know, of course, this is, uh, where True Values, it, it shows Harbor Freight, uh, they haven't, uh. Well, at this point in time, this was taken, Sherwin-Williams wasn't in there yet, but you know, they have a sign where they kinda have.
Yes.
Multiple businesses stacked, um, you know, of course, you have that over at the Shrewsbury Commons, but even, you know, a lot of people wouldn't even know. Uh, Home Depots up this road, so here you can see where everything's kinda put, you know, on one side. What the concern is of the zoning officer and myself is that, let me get this sign back up here. Is, you know, the, the current, the current regs state that it shouldn't be more than six square feet. Which we, we agree is a very small sign.
Yes.
And, and Keith and I would encourage the board to consider, you know, waiving that and giving a modification. But what our concern is with the potential for four additional signs of this size. Because I don't know how we approve this one for a business up there, and the other one's coming, we say we can't do it at that pace.
I understand.
You know, so, um, I, I don't know, of course, I don't know the sign business.
Right.
I don't know if there's gonna be a sign, you know, similar to this, where it's more of a, where they can kinda stack them as people come along or some, I don't know. But, uh, a- and like I said, as zoning officer myself, we, we believe that relief is warranted. Because you don't know that stuff's up there.
Right.
But bottom line is, our concern is that what's presented, we would, we would recommend that it be denied as presented. Uh, for the reason that there's a potential for four other signs of this size to come to us at some point down the road.
Now, if you do something like that, the owners, is whoever would put this first one up. And it would have the ability to be expanded, and they would lease out that space on the sign.
Yeah, see.
It's on Shipley's property.
Yeah, it's on Shipley's property, and as far as the ownership of the sign, I guess would, would be owned by.
Well, at this point, it was owned by the Loops, the Lube Center.
Right, right.
You know, they.
The owner was damaged, I believe, in a storm or hit by a car, as I recall?
No, they had, they had taken.
They had moved.
We had to remove the sign.
It, it saw some wear and tear, as I recall.
Well, they, they had a banner up there for a while, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I don't think we're questioning the, the need for a sign.
Sure.
And probably agree that needs a little bit, needs to be bigger, or you see it, and you're not trying to read small print or something like that. It's just, what do we do to accommodate others that are there now or might come?
I guess my thoughts.
It's been a lot of years and they've never asked for a sign.
Good point.
But, once they see this, they may.
Well, I, I believe, I think, I, in fact, I know it took place, the, uh, I don't know what's gonna become of the Sky King Building.
Yeah.
Uh, because that's been sold, um, so I don't know what's going to go in there. If, if, uh, Phantom Fireworks is gonna keep ownership of that or not, cause they are moving into this property. But I guess, just from my own understanding and knowledge, if I was coming to you and I wanted to put in a sign like this. And I would own this sign, so if somebody else wants to put on top of it, they're gonna have to talk to me about it.
Right, no, no, absolutely, and.
But I think that's for them to work out, um, and then the board at that time would have to decide if they would be willing to, you know.
Right, what I don't wanna see is.
Enlarge that sign.
We put it in, and then we need to do something different like the one across the street, to show everything that's up in that general area. Because then they've already invested the time and the energy and the cost for the, the one that they have.
Yeah.
I think that's probably bringing that up now.
Yeah, so that they don't go to this, go to this expense for a large sign, well, it's understandable is. Be more of a, I don't know what the proper term is, but.
No, I, I understand, like, would you be more comfortable if, um, if the sign was, what they, what you're asking is. You'd like to see it probably like redesigned, where it would be a multi-tenant sign.
Correct, is what we would recommend to staff.
What you would recommend to staff is that, um, if the Lube Center was on it and the Body Shop wanted to go on it. Um, I don't know how they would work that whole scenario out, like who's gonna pay for it, and then, you know, if they would pay them to get on the sign. Or.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's a private matter.
Yeah, or you, would you, if we designed it like where the Lube Center was there. And had a section in the bottom where additional signs could be added, at, then just say the signs would have to be this size. And, you know, to maintain the, the integrity of it, and they could, they could be added if the other customers wanted to go on there.
Sure.
Um, and then billing wise, I don't know, eh, do you want equal billing for each tenant? Or would one be the anchor, like the Lube Center, the larger, and then smaller underneath?
Well, I, the, the permit would be issued to the Lube Center.
Right.
So, i- in my opinion is, anyone that wanted to be added to that would be negotiating with the Lube Center. But the township wouldn't be involved in that.
Okay, so if, and I'm, not trying to stress here, but if we had that sign that said the Lube Center, and then underneath where it says drive-through oil changes. Where the arrow is, if we had a sign that was, you know, just say the arrow's thirty inches wide. So, if we had a sign that was, sorry, thirty-six inches wide by maybe four feet high, and it was for three other tenants in there or something, or four tenants. Um, if the Lube Center was willing to incorporate that into their sign at the time we did it, would you be more receptive to that?
I, I think we would be.
Well, then you lose your, if you lose your arrow, that's kinda what you're trying to show people is you.
It is, and I had to redesign, uh, to redesign definitely, cause it definitely needs the arrow on the sign, so we direct.
You could make one of your extra signs spaces the arrow.
Yeah, we could certainly, I just wanna make sure the arrow stands out where people don't, they just know that's kinda like tied in with it. Uh, size-wise of the sign, um, would you be okay with the size that we're showing here?
Somebody, somebody has to be like on the bottom, what if you put the Lube on the bottom and build up with the boxes for new people? And then you could have your arrow down low as well, but high enough for people to see it.
Yeah, I think.
If I'm, if I'm paying for it, I'm not gonna be on the bottom.
I think integrity, integrity wise for design purposes and that, I think that it would look better to. If we could maybe go a few feet higher with the Lube Center and put that sign underneath and still incorporate the arrow. We could definitely redesign and come up with two or three different designs that, uh, that I could show the customer, and then I could also, you know. Definitely submit it to you guys for your review to see if you would be more open to that.
Yeah, a- as far as the, the height, um, and the size of that.
Yes.
We don't have any objections to that if it incorporates all of them.
Okay.
And, and even if it had to be two feet high or something.
That, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
To that, when I say we, I'm talking about staff.
Staff.
Board makes the decision, not me.
Right. How, how far off the road is this sign being planted?
Um, at the time when we showed it, we didn't have an exact, I don't think.
And I'm, I'm sorry, is this going in front of?
It, it's showing a generalization here.
Is this going in front of the Ultra Value, or?
No, it's on the opposite side.
Royal Farms corner.
It's.
Royal Farm.
Where the. Where the pond is, it's like right on the.
Just up on the top of the berm.
That's what I thought it was, the, the picture I was just seeing looked like it was in front of the chain link fence on, on the, um, the other side of the street.
That's just a generalization.
Alright.
Yeah.
How tall is it now?
Ten is proposed.
It's, it's ten feet tall, when, when the sign was originally up, it was out towards the road further. This is, I think you may have this drawing too.
Yeah.
This was an actual real picture of the sign before we took it down. Now, I think it was staggered a little bit for one, not just cause it's a low sign, you could see it closer to the road a little bit. But they didn't wanna interfere with the True Value sign and everything as well, so, um.
My, my only concern is that people coming out of Capri. Or the Royal Farms driveway aren't gonna be blocked from seeing traffic.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely not, no, absolutely not.
And then there's a clear site, site triangle they'd have to meet as well.
And even if it, and even if it had to be a little bit higher to incorporate.
Yeah.
Is what I'd do is I'd go a little higher.
Yeah, our objection is in height.
They have it that below the arrow is where you'd have a list that, have an area that you could change something to add other businesses there. I mean, maybe they even wanna contact Gordon right away.
I mean, otherwise you'd have potentially five signs each stacked higher than the next one, so if somebody could see them, so I think this makes. I mean, I, I, I don't think there's any objection to the, the sign.
Okay.
The size, even if it had to be a little bit bigger, I think to accommodate the other ones, that, that would be okay.
Sure, sure, we can definitely redesign this, and I can add it where we can put some kind of panels, I'm sure the Lube Center would. I'm sure the Lube Center would be, if they can get their sign down there, I'm sure they would, they would be fine with it as well. You know, they're just really wanting to get their name back down there where people can see where to turn.
And understand that.
Yeah, I think they would, they would definitely be open to that, um, I guess, how many tenant panels do you think we would need on there, cause?
Well, I, I'll put it to you like this, there are.
Gordon's got Enterprise in there right there with him, right?
I- if, if all four of these were developed individually, you're looking at max of four.
Four tenant panels, okay.
Um, now, like I said, these are two different parcels, there's currently a plan for this, these two top parcels for a hotel.
Sure.
I honestly don't think that's going to happen, cause I'm here thirteen years and I was approved before I got here.
Okay.
Uh, and there's those.
They're taking their sweet time and building.
And there's no sewer capacity today for it either, they, they gave up some of their sewer capacity, so.
And I, I'm sure that if, if, if you guys are up for it, we could, we could redesign the sign, we could put a four-tenant directory underneath the Lube Center. And we can still keep the arrow, incorporate it, and make it attractive, and bring it, bring it back for a review.
I think if you can do that, we can be a little flexible on.
Sure.
The size.
That would be very helpful for us, but, uh, yeah, we would, we would like the opportunity to do that.
I mean, this size, I think we all agree is fine, if it had to grow a little bit to accommodate, uh, the other four, I think we'd be okay with that too.
Okay.
Right, I think I'm seeing.
Yeah, but you've been working with Megan, so you've been communicating with, i- if you get a first draft or something before you spend a lot of time with her or something. If you wanna run it by her.
Yes.
And then she'll get it out to Keith and I.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah.
That would be great, I could do that right away, I'll, I'll talk, you know, to them, and within a week's time, I can get a draft out, and we can send it, and then.
Okay.
Whatever the procedure is to get back one through, I guess.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll, unless we hear otherwise, we'll, we'll automatically put it on our next board meeting for next month.
That would be, that'd be wonderful, and, uh, okay, so I just send it back, you said to Megan.
Yep.
Where I've dealt, you know, with, with these guys for a long time, they're very good company, they, they would under, they'll, they'll understand this. Okay?
Well, thank you for staying.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
On the agenda, we appreciate it.
We'll see you in the next, next meeting.
We do have some, um, correspondence, you have that in, in front of you. New cable rates for people that have Armstrong, um, there was a request from South Central PA Search and Rescue. I think it takes a lot of nerve to come down to this end of the county and ask for donations for a fire company in Wrightsville, but. Unless, I will, I will give them the courtesy of a response, but unless somebody says different. I think we have three fire companies and two EMT companies with.
I don't know how many alarm fire it'd have to be to get Wrightsville over here to help.
Well, I guess because they're.
I think this is more for river rescue.
Yeah, search and rescue, I think that's why.
We're pretty far away from the river too.
It looks like they wanna help feed the dogs though.
There's a pond by my house.
They have dogs for.
Yeah, they have canine handlers, but, I mean, it's, it's just, we gotta put our money where, in my mind, where it does the most good, and that's in our.
I just don't think it would be worthwhile saying anything to the fire department, so they need these guys, they're calling.
Oh, I'm sure they know about them, because I know that, um, Shrewsbury, they, they get called, and they do. They have like a swift water or something rescue team, right, Shrewsbury, so I'm sure they know about, about these guys.
Yeah, since they're affiliated, it says Station ninety-three, so your kind of, I'm on one knows about them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just so everybody knows, if you didn't see it, you should be getting an invitation, and they're doing it much earlier this year at CS Davidson.
I didn't get that.
It does.
I got, you probably, I got an email or a text, they said they're gonna send.
Place to hang this.
Formal, um, invitation, but it's April the twenty-ninth. Those who went remember how hot it was last year, so they say we took note of that, that, and we have, are doing it earlier because of the weather. So, it's April twenty-ninth, as soon as I get, uh, this is just to save the date.
Okay.
So, as soon as I get, says, uh, keep an eye out on your inbox for a formal invitation. So as soon as I get, says, uh, keep an eye out on your inbox for a formal invitation. So it'll probably come by email. But I'll, I'll let everybody know just in case somebody doesn't get one for some reason. It's only a month and a half away. Probably be too cold.
I might not be in town.
What about the C G A game? You know about them yet?
No, I haven't heard anything about C G A.
We don't wanna get skipped like we did two years ago.
Went to the same place your present went this year.
Uh-oh.
What?
Typically you get a gift from them at the end of it, right? Did you see one this year?
No.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Where did he go?
I don't know.
I thought you knew.
Did your daughter get one?
We have to invite Tim back. I think he's forgotten about us.
Um, so there's that.
Well, for three hundred bucks or whatever, we can, uh, buy our own gifts.
And then I did get an email asking if we would consider. Our contribution to Paul Smith Library doubling is what they're suggesting.
Doubling?
That's what, that's what, uh, the boroughs are doing with some caveats. And, um. I personally think it's too early. We need to see what's happening with the library system. I think I can probably speak for the board and say, look, as a municipality, if it makes sense, yeah, we'll consider getting more, but let's. But we gotta know the money's gonna stay local.
Correct.
We gotta know that the library's gonna stay under local control. And as I spoke at the meeting, if they don't happen, we may not give as much. So, so I'll just keep, I think it's a little, it's a little early. To do that and I.
They're clearly gonna need more support if they go independent, but there's, there's a lot of hurdles there too.
They probably can't survive if they go independent.
Yeah.
The problem is.
I feel, I feel like the, uh, library system knows that and is trying to strongarm them.
Well, what's happening, I think, is the library system probably is not sustainable the way it is now.
No. And that, and that's why they're trying to.
They're losing.
Generate some capital.
A million couple of year, but guess where most of that loss comes from? The main library in York, White Library.
York, yeah.
That's, that's over a million dollars in, in the red every year. So, you know. While, yes, would this save money if they were branches instead of, um, yeah, cause they would cut the hours and they would cut the, you wouldn't need a. Masters in the library or whatever to run the library. All those things would change. But at the same time. We make the pitch that everybody's underpaid, so they have to find a way to increase all their salaries too. So, so they've got a, they've got an issue, but we're doing okay in this part of the county.
Yeah.
But as we know, it's always a struggle for this part of the county, cause things are focused on York. That's all that, um, I, I doubt there's any closing public comment unless Stan wants to speak again. Um, is there a motion?
Motion for a garment.